Good evening. Voting is how we participate in a civic society, be it for president or for municipal election. It's the way we teach our children how to be citizens and the importance of their voice. Those words of wisdom are from our former attorney, U.S. Attorney General Lana Lynch. I want to start out tonight by congratulating and thanking each one of our candidates for having the courage, the commitment, and the desire to serve our community in the capacity as an elected official. It is not an easy job, but it is a very, very important job and the cornerstone of democracy, as we all know. So, welcome to the Upland 2020 City Council and Treasurer Candidate Forum. We are very excited to have everyone participating. As I mentioned last night, we are a nonpartisan, nonspecific issue group, and our desire is to give the candidates the opportunity to share their point of view with the voters so that voters can make educated decisions when they cast their ballot. So first, I'd like to start off tonight by welcoming Matt Scholl, who is the youth pastor at First Presbyterian Church of Upland, who will first lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then in invocation. Pastor Scholl?
Thank you. Let's repeat the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Will you bow your heads with me in prayer? Gracious God, we thank you for your presence here, and we ask for your guidance in all that we do. We thank you for the leadership represented with these candidates. Thank you for the way they love the city of Upland and are working toward truly making this a city of gracious living. In this tumultuous time of civil unrest, may our city, our people, our leaders show the world that love is stronger than hate and that light is stronger than darkness. We ask that you would grant these leaders the wisdom they seek, that they would be honest and kind, courageous, seeking what is best for the people of this city. May they see with clear eyes and may they listen with open minds and open hearts. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Scholl. I would also like to tonight thank Carlos Garcia from FYI Technologies for stepping in at the last minute in order to ensure that we could broadcast this event live across multiple platforms. Tonight, he will be multitasking for us, and for that, we greatly appreciate it. He assures us he could do this in his sleep, the technology part. So, thank you, Carlos, for your assistance. So, to give a little bit on our ground rules tonight and how we will proceed over the next hour and a half or so, what I'm going to do is a very high-tech sophisticated method of randomly drawing people's names. Tao?
Is anyone having trouble hearing, Shelley?
No.
Or is it just me? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we will do a random draw in order of how the speakers will speak. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening statement, and the candidate who makes the first opening statement will make the final closing statement for the evening. We have drafted written questions that we have solicited through input through the community, and also, the audience will be submitting questions through the Facebook Live feed. And I do want to say that we reserve the right to edit any questions that come through and also to ensure that the questions are in the spirit of our forum. So, we appreciate everyone's understanding on that. I will randomly, through an equally scientific method, draw a question from my magic jar. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to the question without interruption. Once the candidate has fully responded, the other candidates can also chime in, and they will be given 30 seconds. The wonderful Heidi Hall will be giving you a 15-second notice to show that when you're getting close to 15 seconds, and then she'll be giving you a warning that you're coming up on your time for expiration. And we do also reserve the right to turn off your microphone if it goes beyond that, if it goes longer than that. So, we anticipate that each question, that each candidate will answer approximately five questions tonight. We also tried something a little different last night, which we'll do towards the end, and it will be just, I will throw out a topic, and each individual can give as much information or as little information on that topic as they choose. And I thought it was a little bit fun. So, that's just a little something different that we might do tonight also. And we will finally close with two-minute closing statements from everyone. Are there any questions? Tao, I'm talking a little louder. Can you hear me? Okay, everybody else can hear me fine?
Yeah.
All right, let's go with our random draw. Shannon, we will start off with Shannon. Next will be Tao, then Greg, and bringing up the rear will be Carlos. So, Shannon Maust for District One. Opening statement.
Thank you. First, I want to start by thanking the facilitators of tonight. I really appreciate it. I was really excited to be able to attend this evening when I first heard about it. I'm a lifelong resident in Upland for 51 years. I have two children. Their names are Abby and Bailey. They're 16 and 22, that went to the Upland schools. And I'm also a graduate from Upland High School myself, 1986. I went on to go to college at Cal State San Bernardino, and I have a degree in management. And then segued right into working for Nordstrom's. Maybe some of you have heard of that company. So, I had a very robust and prosperous career there for about 23 years. And then I retired. My husband and I are business owners in the city of Upland. We have an office. And I joined the business about five years ago with him, and we run this together. And with that, it afforded me some time to be able to participate in our community. So, volunteerism is something that I enjoy, and I've already thrived on. It started mainly before the kids, and then it kind of changed into with the kids when you do this through the school system. But about four years ago, I got actively involved in the city and really enjoyed it. I attended a city council meeting, and I was pretty much hooked. It started with being able to view packets and agendas for the city and then wanting to get further involved. I've been on the city council advisory committee for the past two years. So, that experience has given me a lot of research into our city, being able to get input and work with staff, as well as I'm the facilitator of a Facebook page that's growing in popularity to support our businesses, and that's called Eat Upland. And I have a great love of Upland. It's where I chose to raise my kids. I've seen a lot of change in Upland, obviously, living here my whole life. And I look forward to being able to share more with you this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I highly recommend your Facebook page. I have discovered many new restaurants and like to read everyone's comments there. So, thank you for that. Our next opening statement will be from Tao Ho Ching.
Good evening. My name is Tavah Ho Ching. Many people know me as Coach Ho Ching. I have been an Upland resident here since 2008 and married a third-generation Uplander. My wife and I have seven children. Four of them have graduated from Upland High School. The last three are still in, two of them in Upland High and one of them at Foothill North. All of our children have been heavily involved in sports at all levels in the community. You might have seen my wife, Tina, and I volunteering at the concession stands during the football games. We have enjoyed volunteering for all these programs. I have a master's degree in organization, management, and leadership. I'm also an accredited teacher with a dual teaching credential in multiple subject and also special education. I have also earned my administrative credential. I have worked as a probation officer in Los Angeles County Probation Department for seven years, and then switched over and started teaching special ed with the same kids who are locked up in juvenile halls and also the camps. I currently work for the Los Angeles County Office of Education. I oversee the National Meal Program and also the camp assessment units. I am a God-loving man. Throughout my life, I've learned that true service, what true service is. This has made me the man I am today. To this end, I hope to be able to serve on the city council and bring stability and unity to Upland through my service. And I would ask, I would thank everyone for today, especially for the pastor, for his, for the pledge of allegiance and the prayer. I really enjoyed his prayer. The only thing I can say is please vote for Coach Ho Ching for Upland City Council, District Three. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. You have to be very busy with seven children. Congratulations on that. All right.
Three grandchildren, sorry.
Oh, good for you. Our next candidate is Greg Bradley, who is running for treasurer.
Thank you. My name is Greg Bradley. I was born in Upland, and I am deeply tied to this city. My grandfather came here 115 years ago and operated the original telegraph and telephone company. My son's great-grandfather built significant buildings here, such as schools and the church at sea in Euclid in 1930. I started one business in 1972 when I was finishing college and two others after college. Those still operate in the city of Upland. In addition to those, I manage the technical systems in other businesses and work as a consultant in business and litigation. I have noticed that the city has been working their way to disaster for some time now. It's clear past city leaders have mismanaged city finances and dismantled institutional systems and procedures intended to foster transparency for the residents. The role of a city treasurer is more than just protecting cash, investments, and other assets. Unfortunately, city leaders have prevented the treasurer from performing those duties as prescribed by Government Code Section 41001 through 07. In 2016, Larry Kinley, a very competent treasurer, was elected. Neither the mayor nor any of the four city managers in four years would allow him to do his job or even meet with him. Mr. Kinley is hoping I can force the city to allow me to do my job as it was critical to manage many problems years ago. During the time he was not allowed to do his job, CalPERS UAL ballooned from 80-some million to 120-some million. Mr. Kinley is also hoping I can follow up on his complaint with the district attorney's office. Those problems were already disastrous before COVID started devastating our economy. It is critical that we have someone that understands how to stop and handle things in crisis mode.
Wonderful, thank you. I think that is, it's impressive that you could trace your family roots in Upland back 115 years. I'm sure your family has a treasure trove of information regarding the city. So, I'd like to introduce now Carlos Garcia.
Thank you, Shelley. I appreciate you putting this together with the rest of your team. Heidi, also thank you for moderating this as well too with the timekeeping. Good evening, folks. My name is Carlos Garcia, and I have lived in Upland for the past four years with my beautiful wife and son. My wife and I have been married, come this November, 23 years. My son just turned 14 and is attending Upland High School as a ninth grader. So, yes, I'm getting old, so that's all fun. I'm also a local business owner. I have my own technology and social media company called FYI Technologies. I hold a bachelor's degree in information technology from the University of Phoenix, as well as a master's degree in educational technology from Pepperdine University. I also have my CTE teaching credential from the University of San Diego, and I have many years of experience in both education as well as private industries, and I'm a firm believer in helping others. I am asking for your support this November to represent District Three to have a voice on the city council. I will begin to tell that I'm not a politician. I'm also not trying to revive a failed political career or philicacy because it was promised to me by a previous friend or because I was asked to run, because, you know, basically downtown asked me to run. I want to make sure that you, the voter, understands that. I'm hoping that this community-driven effort to represent the District Three seat, there is no eye in serving our community, and it's all about a community coming together as a team. We have two years left on the term of the seat, and I want to make sure we don't waste precious time not involving or listening to our community when it comes to significant decisions. I want to bring change to our city. Therefore, my goal is to be a voice for our community and district. With the help of our community, I would like to make any impact in the following areas. Making sure that we work closely with our police department and community to continue building our neighborhood watch programs and continue to eliminate our crime in our city. I would also like to share that Upland police officers and police management associations have officially endorsed me as city council candidate. I want to make sure that I work hard also to prevent the sale of any precious parkland and also look for opportunities to attract new family-oriented businesses, as well as make sure that we do everything we possibly can to help the current businesses in our city with their struggle due to COVID restrictions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I will warn you, my youngest graduated from high school this year, and that you have to prepare yourself for mentally also, especially when your kid's school has been your social life for the majority of the time. Okay, so Shannon, we will start with you with our first question tonight. So, over the past few years, there has been quite a bit of criticism regarding a lack of transparency on the part of city staff and elected officials. Do you think this criticism has merit? And if elected, what steps would you take to improve transparency within City Hall?
I do believe that there is merit to the complaint of transparency within the city. I've had my own experiences with not being able to get necessarily an answer back, whether it's via email or phone call. So, for myself as a representative, I want to be approachable, accountable, and accessible. So, owning our own businesses afforded me opportunities to have quite a bit of time to be able to invest back in our community. And I look forward to not only being able to reach out through email or phone calls, but establishing and having connectivity with more town hall meetings within our community so that residents have all different venues and options that fit for their schedules to be able to give their inputs and their concerns and their ideas, as well as I have some ideas on being able to connect through media platforms and being able to have residents more aware of what's going on in the city so we can get attendance up at committee meetings where there's a wealth of information being shared in those meetings and have more of a connection point.
Yes, engagement is critical. Now, if any candidate now would like to, as we get started, if you'd like to add anything to this topic, if you just raise your hand or make some indication that I then, and then I will randomly select folks that will have 30 seconds to chime in. We will allow the original, the candidate that was originally asked the question to make any final comments on that particular question. So, would anyone like to add anything on the issue of transparency? Okay, we'll start with Carlos Garcia.
Yeah, thank you. So, I do concur with everything that Shannon said on that. One way that I've started transparency, and this is, again, no bearing that I ever thought I was going to be running for office, but I've been the one live streaming a lot of the city events that have not been broadcast, a lot of the rallies, a lot of the cleanups that have been broadcast on live stream to bring awareness. Some of the council as well too, some of those meetings that, you know, is not being broadcast. I've been in the forefront of streaming lives for our communities. Actually, our citizens have a voice, and they can see what's going on as well.
Great, Tao?
Yeah, I concur too. To be transparent, you have to be available to people. You have to be approachable. You have to be accessible. One of the things I've done this year is when I pass out my brochure, I made sure that not only my email was on the bottom, but my phone number was on the bottom because I want people to be able to access me at any time. And that's really important. So, I think we just have to work harder at trying to be more accessible in all options that we can.
Greg?
I also want to agree that there is a tremendous lack of transparency. I feel it's important to be available. I basically spend my life being available. I also want to say that Shannon is the one that actually drug me into the city in the first place. She was absolutely tremendous with being open and welcoming and literally dragging me to the first city council meeting. So, anyway, thank you.
However we can get you there, we're happy to have you.
It worked.
Shannon, would you like to offer any closing comments?
I will. I would like to say that that is my approach. This is a team effort. So, any resident, everyone is welcome. Everyone is welcome to come and give their ideas, their input, and be involved. And there can be avenues and outlets where we can definitely be on media, have some volunteerism ideas put together for groups that want to belong.
Okay, thank you. Our next question will go to Tao. In recent years, there have been a few proposals to abandon, sell, or trade parkland to private developers. Can you share with us when, if, or under what factors you would consider when evaluating such a request?
He muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Tao, you need?
I'm sorry, Shelley. I couldn't hear that last part.
That's fine. I can't. In recent years, there have been a few proposals to abandon, sell, or trade parkland to private developers. Can you share with us when, or if, or what factors you would consider when evaluating such requests?
So, I guess it would have to be every circumstance. I mean, we hear people talk about things as it's just one big time. We just cannot sell no matter what. I think every time it comes up, we have to take in what's best for Upland. And whatever is best for Upland, we need to reevaluate. We need to look and listen and hear both sides of everything because we don't know what is the best for Upland 10 years from now or what could be the best for Upland 20 years ago might not be the best thing right now. To just have a common cover over every problem, it doesn't really work that way. Everything is an individual time where we have to look at things and individualize it and look at it and see what is best for Upland. We might have people who disagree or whatever they think, but we have to have facts that come behind there and show us what are the pros and what are the cons. And we have to look at everything every time it comes up differently because if we go in with a bias, we could be hurting Upland, you know? We need to go in with an open mind and think about things that happen because every situation is different. And so, we need to figure out which is the best thing for Upland as a whole.
Would any other candidates like to chime in? Okay, Carlos?
So, I will tell you that part of what I'm running on is to save the precious land, the precious parkland. So, for me, land is very valuable, not only in our community but everywhere. If there's empty land, that has a lot of great value. From a business perspective, when I look at the hospital, it's actually poor planning, not long-term planning. And that is why they're in the bind that they are today. But I feel because they've made mistakes in their planning for future development, they're coming after land that should not be given to them, you know, or sell at a very minimal cost, in my opinion. I think that that land is valued a lot higher. But I will tell you that, again, that land, open land, is very valuable, it's very precious. And once it's gone, it's gone. You're not going to get it back or grow it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
I agree. The land for the parks is precious. If we're going to give up a part of a park, there needs to be an absolutely overwhelming reason to do that. I have a big complaint with the total lack of transparency in the whole issue with Memorial Park. It's very obvious that we were told very little, there's very little truth in the statements that were made by almost everyone involved, and I'm very uncomfortable with the entire situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, would you, do you have any comments?
I'll add a little to what Carlos said. I'll echo his comments. I think as leaders, we need to entertain every conversation that comes our way. Doesn't mean that we'll go forward with it, but the parkland is the asset of the residents. So, the residents get to have a say in how they'd like their assets taken care of and managed. Again, it comes with transparency. We've had several issues with Cabrillo Park, now Memorial Park, where there was no transparency in the beginning of the process to open the dialogue to see what direction we needed to go. So, first and foremost, there needs to be a plan anytime you try to touch the residents' assets.
Great. And Tao, would you like to close this question out for us?
Yes.
Heidi, do you have a question?
All right, go ahead.
Oh, I saw Heidi raised her hand.
For the sake of transparency, I accidentally let Carlos, who rebuttled first, 45 seconds, and thus, I gave each person after that 45 seconds instead of 30 seconds. I just want to make sure that that was clear to everybody. So, Tao, you too will have 45 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So, I wasn't talking about Memorial Park, but not as brought up. We have to understand one thing. It's gone to the people. That means when they come back, we can't go in thinking that we know more than the people or that the people are not smart enough to understand what's going on. As leaders, we also have to follow what the majority asks of us. We cannot put our personal feelings into forcing down the throats of Upland what they vote on. Whatever they vote on, that's what we have to support and go by because the majority is what really matters here.
Great, thank you. All right, we will now move on to Greg Bradley. Your question. Upland has very few vacant parcels of land available. Due to the limited availability, how do you suggest the community evaluate how these parcels should be used and/or developed?
The first thing I would like to say is that the city needs to have a consistent plan that has been agreed on, worked on by committees, and has been voted on where everybody knows what the rules are. In the past, those rules have gone out the window every time a developer has wanted to do something. They've made exceptions for people. There's a number of areas that need to be developed. Downtown Upland is a good example. That's an absolute gold mine. All the cities around us have turned their downtowns into vibrant communities that are making a lot of money. We need to do things like that and come up with a plan. Obviously, we need to deal with parking in downtown, access to the railroad, make sure that we don't make too much noise for the people that live there. We need to make it look more like the packing house in Claremont. When I was a kid, that was absolutely nothing there. And now, look at it, it's absolutely fabulous. We need development. We need more places for people to live. They need to be denser. We have to have that. But we need to do it with a plan, with everybody's agreement.
Would any other candidates like to chime in on this? Okay, we'll start with Tao.
I think we need to bring in certain businesses I think we need to bring in certain businesses that's going to really help the community grow. I noticed one thing, my kids love watching movies. And we have a movie theater in Ontario right by us. We have a brand new movie theater being built at Montclair Plaza. We didn't, something we should have thought of before, something that brings the community together. And, you know, I think we missed out on some of those opportunities.
All right.
Well, as our parkland is shrinking and the vacant lots and the developments that we brought into Upland, we've had a tendency to have a history of doing like a patchwork quilt. So what I'd like to see is when we do own city parcels that are mixed in with private parcels, and Benson to Montevista is a good example on Foothill Boulevard, that we have a strategic overall vision plan to partner with private ownership, mixed with what we own as a city, so that we see the big scope of the project.
Great. Carlos?
So I'm just going to add, I agree with what's been said really quickly. Again, land is very valuable. I think we need to look at this as a community, as a city, what's going to be the best thing that will acquire this land to bring in the best revenue for our city. Since I've gotten here, all I've ever heard is that Upland is broke, we can't do this, we can't do that. So we need to be very strategic as to who acquires this land to be able to maximize the amount of revenue that we can get to our city to help build it back up.
And Greg, any closing thoughts on the question?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Great. Now we will move on to Carlos. How do you plan to balance your personal ideology over the community at large in determining how you will vote on any given issue?
And thank you for that question. That's a great question. As you heard me from the beginning of my statement, and what I've told my constituents that I spoke to, I'm doing this as a face representing our community, our district. I'm not there to put my own personal ideology. I've had enough of that during the last two years, always hearing that, I think that this is what's best for my community. I think that this is the way I need to do this. No, it's not about I. There is no I in team. And that's my driven force behind why I'm doing what I'm doing, because I want the community to totally be involved in this decision-making process. It's very important to me that everyone has an equal voice, whether it's from my district or the entire city as a whole. It's very important.
Would any other candidate like to chime in? Tao?
So one of the things is, we got to hear from the people. I think we need to put more into, take, for example, the castle they're trying to build at Memorial Park. I heard a lot of adults give their opinions. But what I didn't hear, what were the kids saying? What were the parents of these young kids wanted? You know, we need to feel, find out the real answer to things by getting it from the people who are going to benefit from it. We need to make sure we're doing surveys and certain things like that to get the real answers, and not just what we want to hear. Thank you.
Any other comments? Shannon?
Well, I'm definitely on this journey to have you join in. So whatever aspect that's going to take, I look forward to that. I think that we definitely, as council leadership, need to know the pulse of our community. And once we know the pulse of our community and have more involvement through our community, it's definitely more of a team concept. And when you take the leadership role, you do somewhat put aside your personal values and you go for the majority of the resident vote.
Great. Greg?
I just wanted to say that in some of the projects that I've been working on and trying to figure out the way that the city should move forward, I've been absolutely astonished at the quality of some of the people. Unbelievable amounts of intelligence and education of people that we have in Upland. And they're an enormous asset to making the city a better place. Thank you.
Yes, we are definitely greater as a whole than individual parts. Carlos, would you like to offer any closing thoughts?
Yeah, I'd just like to, yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, leaders inspire folks. And I want to make sure that I, as a leader, am able to inspire our community to come together and be that voice as a whole, not just my own personal opinion on things, period. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Shannon, we're going to move to a question from our audience. And that one of the issues near and dear to this individual's heart is code enforcement. I think that we all know that some cities are taking some very creative approaches to code enforcement. I believe one local city recently published everyone's name that had an enforcement issue in the local paper. And what are your thoughts about how to more effectively implement code enforcement within Upland?
Well, my experience in the last 18 months has been at the Upland Police Department, facilitating and running their Business Watch program. So the Business Watch program is to strengthen the partnerships and relationships with property owners and property managers. That program is, even though I've been actively 18 months with Upland Police Department, actually in total years, well over three years. So fostering those relationships to make sure that they are welcoming shopping centers, that our residents do not want to leave the city, and they want to participate and shop within our city, is so crucial to our revenue and our sales tax dollars. So once you go through the Business Watch program, if we get to a point in the relationship where they're not able to comply, that is where code enforcement comes in together. So we bridge the gap. I'm extremely familiar with code enforcement. We have four full-time officers in that department. So part of my platform was refocusing the city on service to our residents, customer service. So making sure that we prioritize what our residents want, which are cleaner shopping centers, and as well, they want healthy communities and neighborhoods. So restructuring the code enforcement department, putting that as a priority if the team of colleagues of our elected officials agree, and being able to have a more solid, effective program within our city.
Great. Would anyone like to add anything? Great.
Well, I was just looking at a letter that I received from the city of Upland this morning. And I received it from them in 2011. And it was regarding that they were going to start enforcing a lot of sign regulations, temporary signs, and a lot of other regulations on the businesses. And they still haven't done a darn thing. It's a good source of fines, and it's a good source to make those businesses in that area a lot nicer. I've been working on trying to make that neighborhood nice for 41 years that I've been there, and it needs help.
All right, Carlos?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad also I got to meet Shannon and her involvement with the community, because she's opened my eyes to a lot of different things as well, too, with code enforcement. What I see with code enforcement is also that there's a lack of bodies to be able to get out there and do things. For example, right now also, you know, Measure Q, yes, on Measure Q, there's signs, illegal signs everywhere. And somebody can tell me that, you know, those are allowed as well, too. But there's just not enough time during the day for code enforcement to go around and ding these folks for violations. I mean, we'd be sitting on a nice little pot of money if we can get more bodies in code enforcement to take care of the issue. Thank you.
Tao, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, basically, I concur with what everyone else is saying. I mean, we, I think the issue though I have is, I think we need to pull some of this stuff away from the police force. They have other things that they need to concentrate on. And the city should be really responsible for having code enforcers out there. I think we need to really help the police, you know, be able to do their job more than, you know, this code enforcer. I think we need, the city needs to step up and start taking care of a lot of these things.
And Shannon, would you like to close this question out? I noticed her screen was going in and out before.
I think it's frozen.
I think it's frozen, yeah.
Let's see if Carlos can work his magic real quick.
Oh, just so you know, her entire bit, her entire building lost power. So she's trying to log back on right now.
Okay.
Oh.
I think she's coming back on. Hang on.
That was very quick.
Yeah. She's well-prepared. She probably has a generator and, you know.
There we go.
There you go.
Shannon, you back on?
She still looks frozen.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Am I good?
Your sound is coming in. You're frozen, you're on your image, but your sound is good.
Sorry, the whole building just lost power and logged me off. Hmm.
Well, we can hear you.
Great.
There is a photo of you up on the screen.
Okay.
Oh, there's your family. Okay. All right, so we are going to move to the next question will be for Tao. Can you give us an example of experience in life that was challenging and what you learned from that?
Oh my goodness, there's so many. I don't know where to pick from. You know, life is challenging enough. I would say one of the times, you know, working, when I coached, I volunteer as coaching for my kids at the Junior All-American, the Upland Hurricane. And coaching the kids sometimes is very challenging because your expectation sometimes gets above, or your idea of how things should go is different. But sometimes you just need to get together as a group and figure things out together, instead of trying to do everything yourself. I would, every time we had our things, every Monday when I was the head coach, I loved to have the days where they come over and we just, we just feed them barbecue, watch some TV and let them play. Just so they can build that, the friendship and the, you know, the brotherhood of them, well, and sisterhood. I had some girls I coached too, also in football. So we, you know, you need to build that camaraderie, you know, because they, it's, they have to understand there's more to life than football, you know? There's more to life than just certain things. We have to grow up. We have to be good human beings. And I try to raise, teach my athletes, the ones I coach, that being a better person is more important than being a better football player. You know, grow up, give back to your committee, the community. I'm so proud of all the ones I coach, and they're in the Army and other stuff than football. And they're successful. Thank you.
Great. Anyone like to add anything to, give an example of a challenging situation? Okay, I think that I agree with you that life on its own is a challenging situation some days. So, yes.
So do I get a closing remark on that?
You sure can. Go ahead. Yeah.
I just want to say how proud I am of all those kids I coached who didn't end up in football. You know, they, and I see them every time in high school, and I'm always like, how's your grades? How you doing in school? Because those were what I wanted to remember me as. I don't want them to remember me as an X and O guy. I wanted them to remember me as the guy that, hey, you know what, I care about your grades. I care about you. And I'm proud of a lot of them turned out and went and served our country in the Army, Marine, and the Air Force. And so, oh, and the Navy. I have one in the Navy. So I'm proud of them, too. So thank you.
Good for you for keeping in touch. I think that's wonderful. So our next question, it will go to Greg. So can you, on city council, as a leadership position requires many different leadership traits, can you name a leader who has inspired you and why?
I'd have to say my dad. My dad was, when graduated from high school here, he was a Marine in World War II. He was an optometrist here in Ontario and Upland. And when he retired due to bad health, he moved to where the air was better for him. And then he started volunteering, helping to find various military bases, optometrists for the base. When he couldn't find one for Camp Pendleton, he decided to do the job himself. And he did that job until seven years ago.
Oh, good. That's great.
Which makes him about 87 at the time. He's now 95.
Wow.
Pretty impressive role model.
Very impressive. Would anyone like to add anything? Shannon, are you with us?
I am here. Sorry about the camera. Yes, I would say that I had some phenomenal leadership working at Norenstrom's for 23 years. The Norenstrom family was a pioneer in the retail industry, as well as ran a company that was very diverse. And I had many opportunities of having great mentorship in my career at Norenstrom's, as well as my dad, who is inspirational, worked for Honeywell Industries as a CEO, and very fortunate that he had some great input through my life as I was growing up, business-wise.
Wonderful. Tao?
I would have to say my parents. My parents have taught me who I, made me who I am today, their examples through their hard work and teaching me how to serve. Also, I would have to say my wife's parents. They have been great. They have showed me so much how to serve in the community here in Upland. They, both of my parents, I am totally grateful for. I couldn't have asked for better, my biological parents and then also my in-laws. We, I just love them to death.
Wonderful. Carlos, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I could talk about my parents all night long, but I actually want to give you a good example of great leadership currently within our city. And that is the leadership of Chief Goodman, leading our troops here, making city, our city a lot safer, really standing up for everything that he believes in. And unfortunately, you know, he's been, he's gone through a lot of turmoil because he stands as a firm believer and a firm leader. His troops really respond to him, respect him. And all of us as a community really are grateful for that great example of what a true leader is in our current day. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Going back to you, any closing comments?
I'd have to agree with Carlos. The Chief Goodman is a very impressive person, very, very good with people, very sophisticated, very even in the way that he treats people. I've been extremely impressed.
And a very impressive educational background also.
Yes.
So that is wonderful. Okay, we are also now going to move to Carlos. I believe that you're up next. First day in office, what is your plan? What's your number one issue first day in office?
First issue in day in office, because you have to remember that my office is actually going to be for two years. I'm running for the seat. So there is a limited time of, you know, what can be accomplished. But I need to know exactly what's going on behind the scenes. I would love to just meet again with city managers, city leaders, department leaders to find out exactly where they are. I know the history behind it, but what are the steps that we need to do to keep our city moving forward? Through the financing, developing more revenue for our city, keep our public safety as top priority as well, too, making sure that we make the right decisions and not sell off land that we will never be able to get back as well, too. So in a nutshell, communication is very important to me in making good, solid calls based on the information given to us by staff, and giving them also the opportunity to find out why things have been done the way they have been done over the several, the last several years.
Great. Would anyone like to add anything? And Shannon, just indicate, let me know if you'd like to add something.
Sure. I will, and it's my turn.
Okay. Go ahead, Shannon.
Okay. I agree. I think the first couple of months is absolutely acclimating to staff, understanding all of the variables. I think most of us are following along what's going on, getting used to each other as a colleague team, and then being able to chart out what the priorities are going to be. We are in a pandemic. We are facing some times that are different than they were in previous years. So we will have those challenges that are brought on new with some unknown variables. So effective communication is key and being able to move forward in the city.
Great. Tao?
Yeah, what you get, the first thing I would do is research, research, research. Figure out where I am in that seat. Like, that seat, if I became the city council for District III, it only has two years left. So we're, I'd be two years behind. So it's about catching up, get as much knowledge as I can, and like I said, and then work to build the city. We need, we need to build revenue. We need to build the public safety, especially the police force. We need to, we need to really get out there and help the police force out. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, the treasurer's position is all about money, so we'll start with that. First, we have to deal with the cowper's liability. That's a big problem hanging over our heads. We have to make absolutely sure we don't continue to dig that hole. We have to make absolutely sure we don't continue to dig that hole any deeper. You can't get out of debt when you're digging the hole deeper. And then we fit, we need to figure out ways for the city to make more money. Um, there's a balance between the property tax income that is stable and the, uh, big incomes from sales tax. When you have sales tax, you need to pay down bills. Thank you. I saw that, Heidi.
Okay, and Carlos, going back to you to close out the question.
Okay, over the past few years, I've attended several meetings and I think there's a lot of things that are flying up in the air. Uh, some of the things that really need to be addressed right away are the unfunded pension liabilities. Uh, currently there's fifty-three losses against the city. We have an underfunded PTE department. And COVID has really impacted not only our citizens but businesses as well too. Uh, once, once I'm elected, my priority is to get the council working together, not to divide like we've been seeing for years on the dais. Once council is on the same page and we're working, we're working together with community, uh, there's going to be a lot of greater good for the involvement of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is, um, back up to Shannon. And, uh, the question is revenue, revenue, revenue. Uh, and so what are some of your ideas on generating the infamous revenue for the city of Upland?
Right, money makes the world go round. This is my favorite question because everything is dependent on the city bringing in money. And right now, we are going backwards with COVID and, um, our reserves are going to be depleted, but the unknown of how much. So as far as revenue goes and being a sales executive with Norenstrom's and handling multiple million dollars of accounts and meeting quotas, one of my favorite things to participate in is economic development at the city. I've attended the last almost three years of committee meetings and really want to have a good strategic marketing plan for our city. Our city has hired consultants that will have a five-year plan with the Economic Development Department. And so we are off to a very good start. But being able to, um, partner with staff and bringing new viable businesses to our city and sticking within the general plan, this, uh, plan of, um, all business being brought to the city should generate sales tax revenue. We also need to make sure we're in tune to our residents, knowing that some residents, um, leave the city to shop elsewhere, that we do not provide necessarily what they want in restaurants um, or for shopping. So that is something that we need to pull together in a marketing plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, would anyone else like to comment? All right, let's start with Tao.
Yeah, um, I think before we start anything else, we need to make sure that we are using the revenue that we already have correctly, that we stop, we don't misuse the funds that we have and correct all the things that we need to do to make sure that we maximize the revenue that we already have. Second, we need to bring in new revenue and that can come in, in different sorts. One could be new businesses, other could be the tax. Um, we need to understand that, you know, Upland needs new revenue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carlos?
Um, you know, I agree with, with what's been said so far and I don't want to reiterate the same thing, but we do need, uh, to make sure that we keep our dollars here in Upland. The Shop Upland campaign has been a really great asset. Also, Eat Upland has been just another amazing up, uh, avenue that brings and keeps people here in Upland too. I think as city council, it would be our responsibility to make sure that we promote local businesses, local restaurants, places that folks can, can enjoy family time as well too. And also look further ahead as to possibilities, how we would incorporate a sales tax if that comes, comes up again as well. Now is not the right time because of everything that, that folks are going through specifically with COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, did you have any comments?
I just wanted to say that we need to do what we can to encourage businesses to, to be here. Um, we're chasing too many people out. I, I deal with managing sections of a wide variety of businesses and half of them have left the state. Um, we need to make it friendly to them to be here because they're the ones that generate the money, that generates the sales tax and gives us the jobs. We need to keep them here. Uh, for example, this sign that I'm sitting next to was designed and printed in the city of Upland. It wasn't subbed out somewhere else. It was actually printed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, would you like to close out this question?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, so moving to, um, Tao. Define your individual style of leadership.
Well, individual style of leadership, my leadership, a lot of it is by example. I want to reiterate what, um, uh, Mr. Bradley said. You know, all, all my signs and shirts are meaning here in Upland. Um, because we can't be talking about, let's do everything for Upland and chop out everything. We have to keep our business here in Upland. Um, so I like to lead through example of what, how I live my life and what I say. I, oh, thank you.
Okay, would anyone like to chime in?
I, oh, go ahead.
Ladies first. Ladies first.
I would say my style of leadership, um, would be that I lead by example, but approachability, but as well as education. I think getting in a city, um, venue, getting the ed, the residents to be able to see all the information, um, educate on any of the issues, um, that would be my style of leadership.
Great. Carlos?
Uh, for me, my style of leadership has always been a servant leader. Um, I always serve with the purpose, serve with the heart, always looking to give back as a servant leader in every role that I've been in my, my, uh, professional career. This is always comes from my upbringing for both my mom and dad. So I, I plan on continuing in that until the day I die. So, thank you.
Great. And Tao, we will bring it, uh, Greg, did you have something to add? No? Okay, Tao, we'll bring it back to you to close the question out.
Yeah, I just think we have to be, uh, you know, a good person and, and to lead because we love, you know. I love the city of Upland, you know, and, and you get involved with people in serving them, you learn to love them more. Um, you know, it just got, like you say, it's got to come from the heart. You gotta, you gotta believe in what you're doing. You know, you gotta believe that you're trying to do the best thing for Upland. And, you know, you serve the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question is for Greg. Greg, tell us an example of something that City Hall is doing really well. And to give us an example of something that City Hall, uh, could do a little bit better.
Let's see, um, thoroughly impressed with Carrie Johnson's abilities of running the meetings, uh, and the way that she handled the candidacy. She's full of energy. She's always, uh, doing the right thing. She's handling difficult situations very well. Um, the, the, uh, city is moving towards, uh, you know, um, solar power, which is, is a good thing. Um, the police department's been great. Um, can't think of much else. I'm sorry.
And an example of something that, uh, that an area, an opportunity for improvement?
Transparency. We all feel that they are doing things behind our backs. Um, I realize that there are some things that have to be done out of sight, like closed meetings. But we really are all feeling that things are being done to us rather than for us. Um, that's really what we, what got me involved is, is I didn't like some of the things that were going on. Information was being provided to us that was clearly not what the actuality was. Um, they think, they seem to think that we're not smart enough to know the truth. And I think we have to know the truth and make intelligent decisions based on the truth.
Thank you. Tao?
Shelley, I, I, I'm sorry, uh, I couldn't hear the question. You were, you were like frozen for a little bit and kept static. I'm sorry.
I hope I was frozen in a good pose, okay? It's, the question is, give an example of something that City Hall is doing really well and an example of an area of opportunity to improve, uh, on the side of City Hall. So would anyone else like to chime in? Carlos? Oh, and then I'll call on you Shannon, Carlos is done. And Tao?
Okay, Greg, I, I will agree with Greg. I mean, Carrie is an amazing person dealing with all of us, all of our craziness, uh, a lot of this paperwork too. There is no, I, I don't think she gets enough credit for everything that she does and she puts up with, uh, especially around City Hall as well too. An improvement that can be done within City Hall is I think that we can sharpen our customer service skills, getting back to folks in a more timely base. Um, and I think that also has to be coming from, from leadership, uh, making sure that set that right example of returning full cost to citizen, uh, like in the case of the mayor as well too, and getting back through the constituents when you have a question and you're trying to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
I think a prime example of one of our service leaders is the Upland Police Department. They're doing more for us and keeping the community safe with a lot less than what they've ever had, even going back as well as ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. That's the definition of working, um, smart, not hard and efficiently. And improvement for me beyond customer service would just be how we connect with our community. That, um, is always something that we need to strive on, um, for awareness and connectivity.
Wonderful. And Tao?
Yes, uh, uh, being out with, um, the citizens here in District Three, we're really happy about the Seventh, uh, Seventh Street getting done. Uh, we appreciate that part of it. The Seventh Street needed to get done a long time ago and we're grateful that they're doing that. Um, areas where we can, um, work on, well, we, we definitely need to work on our police force. Right now, they're operating below one percent of population level. That, that is just asking for trouble. We need to get this police force up and running with the more, more of them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg, any final comments to close this out?
No, no thanks.
All right, and we will now move to, um, Carlos. You guys have touched on some of my questions and I don't want to be, it's the questions we have and I don't want to be redundant. So, um, um, Upland is a very diverse community. And I think a couple of candidates have mentioned that there are a lot of untapped resources amongst our citizens. How do you plan to tap into that resource and, resource and improve, um, engagement within the citizens, which also would lead to more buy-in with decisions? That come from City Hall?
Yeah, and that's a great question. We, we do need, uh, diversity. I, I think we really need to tap into the resources that this wonderful community offers. Let's take for example, uh, in the planning commission, we had several candidates who are more than qualified to take over and bring a real, uh, asset to, to be part of those, um, those seats as well too. But yet, you know, that didn't happen. I think a lot of what we're seeing right now is, it's actually keeping the community away, especially those that have expertise that can help us get to the next level and not bringing it into committees in different forums that they can help solve some of these issues or contribute to some of the issues that we're currently facing. I think part of this is also that, you know, we have this untapped resource of folks that want to volunteer, but yet we're paying a lot of money for consultants when we can actually get buy-in from, from citizens who are very heavily involved and invested in our community. And I think we really need to look at that, you know, what we're paying out versus what we're, we can tap in as an untapped resource as well too.
Wonderful. Anyone, Shannon, would you like to add anything?
I think we could do, um, a better job about when we are offering events in our community and through our community um, to bring more diversity, um, forward and more involvement as well as what, um, Carlos was expressing on the planning commission, more avenues and more, um, increased civic engagement.
Wonderful. Anyone else like to add anything? Tao?
Yeah, I think we need to get some of those activities that are very, um, crucial to, um, the community. Um, like the Fourth of July fireworks, you know, those are gone. You know, we, you know, we used to get together as a community, block parties, do anything as a community, as, as everyone just getting together as each other, getting to know each other better and to, you know, do the things that we used to do in the past.
Okay. Um, Carlos, would you like to close this question out?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So what I think that we will do now, um, is that, uh, I will give, uh, a topic and we will go through our order in order to answer, but we'll move to the next person each time to answer first. Everyone will have, Heidi, what did we, a minute or ninety seconds to answer? And it's kind of, I don't want to say free form, it's, I'm not going to give a lot of details. I'm just going to say a topic and each individual then can answer and, um, or address that topic in any way that they, they desire. Heidi, how did, what do we want to do in terms of time?
Ninety seconds, I think. Yes.
Okay, so we will start, um, with Shannon, um, because we reached the top of our rotation again. And our first topic will be, uh, the Bridge Warehouse Development. So Shannon?
Okay. So I know it's free form on the bridge development. We're right in the middle of that. Um, I was very vocal in the beginning about this at City Hall. It did not, uh, meet the general plan for bringing in economic development, which would produce sales tax. So as this has gone on, I am grateful to the community for being as noisy as they were because that is what has brought the developmental agreement up to about twenty-three million dollars for the community. This is a project that the scope does not fit necessarily the general plan. And it was handled very poorly from, um, start to where it is now and the transparency with the community. It is private property, um, that is, um, constructing this project, which brings some challenges when you have private property owners that, um, ha, that fit the zoning requirements, which was questionable at the time. But we are a bedroom community. We can do better than this than bringing in Amazon, the giant, to take over, where we've basically for years and decades have built on the grid homes to bring in a, um, family conducive environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Tao, ninety seconds on, uh, the Bridge Warehouse Development.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know all the facts in, in this situation. From what I heard though, is like Shannon said, we're going to be making twenty-three plus million in twenty years. Um, we always talk about bringing in new revenue. Um, I don't understand. To me, it's kind of weird. It's a private property. It's zoned for doing this. Um, I don't understand how that's a bad thing. Uh, maybe I'm just not, um, filled in a lot about the, the project. Amazon coming in, uh, they talked about the vehicles. I heard that they're going to bring in, um, non-gas vehicles, um, energy efficient vehicles. If we're going to bring in businesses, don't we want the type of business where they're going to be kind to the environment? Um, I am, I'm for it. I think we need more, we need more businesses. I understand that we're, we're like a home environment and stuff like that, but we need revenue. I mean, that comes, that's the bottom line. We need revenue. And creating this type of revenue, I just don't see the, I think the pros outweigh the cons. And, um, until someone shows me more of the cons, I'm going to stick with this. It seems like, uh, we did a good job of bringing them here. we did a good job of bringing them here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Greg, that many, some of these topics are outside of the scope of the Treasury, but you are welcome to participate.
Well, I'm pretty strongly against the Bridge Development Project. It does not fit, it's the wrong development in the wrong place, it does not fit the general plan. As a matter of fact, the general plan specifically prohibits it. It has been completely misrepresented by Bridge. They have lied to us about every single step of this. It's clearly obvious that they came in with a plan for a 1 million square foot building, then dropped it to 600,000 square feet, making people think it was better, then dropped it to 201,000 square feet, making people think, oh, this is great, when in actuality, it's the 201,000 square foot building with 180,000 square foot of covered areas and four acres of staging areas, and it's the truck terminal from hell. They've made a development agreement that is almost intentionally vague, there's no way that we're going to actually hold them to that agreement. Amazon's going to strictly simply run over us, and we're going to be stuck with the wrong thing in the wrong place, and then it's going to open up that entire area to development, and it's simply not allowed here. There's nothing like that allowed in between Fontana and Irwindale, it's absolutely in the wrong place.
Okay, thank you. And Carlos?
Thank you. You know, I'm against the Amazon piece. Whether you think Sequoia is good or bad, it doesn't really matter, the fact is that the city must comply with the regulations, or else we're going to continue down this path of citizen-initiated losses by our residents. I think once I'm elected, I would like to see that the city either retain a competent Sequoia expert or involve the Sequoia experts we have living in our community. Let's make sure projects like this are compliant and move quickly through the process producing revenue. The key thing here is revenue. 20-plus million dollars are just a very short-minded way of looking at revenue. Once that's gone, it's gone. And let's face it, right now, with the way the economy is, that we're going to go through that money, you know, pretty quickly. I think we need to look at long-term solutions. You know, they never suggested anything, you know, possibly a hotel for actually tax revenue, they could have gone in that place as well too. Not to mention the fact too, that, you know, some of the, what they talked about and what they forget to mention is that, even though whether it is Amazon or not, we're not getting any long-term revenue as far as sales tax from there at all. And I think what we really need to do is, you know, have Bridge Development really take a look and not be so fixated on this particular project, and give us some other options as well too. You know, again, I'll bring back what I just said about possibly a hotel. There is no hotel between, you know, Claremont all the way down to Rancho. And that could very well be a great area to generate some of this interest and revenue as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to give you one that's a little bit harder, all right, this time. This time, we will start with Tao, and Shannon, I'll move you to having the final comment on this one. And the topic is open spaces.
Open spaces?
Open space.
Open space, like just the open space we have here in Upland, or open space, are we just?
We're just, so when you, when I say open space, what does that mean to you?
Open space, it just means this space is not being used. I don't know, like we talk about different things, to me, I look at the parks, I look at all that open space in the parks. You know, we don't have a tennis court anywhere in Upland except for the high school, and that's locked up. I mean, we don't have any football fields except for the high school. We need to use some of these open spaces so that we can have activities for the kids, that they'll be able to get out there and get off of their, you know, their games and so forth. I mean, you know, we talk about revenue, we have a program here, Upland Hurricanes, they could use an open space for their football team. You know, if we put the football field close to downtown LA, every Saturday when they have games, they bring in hundreds and hundreds of people from other communities to come watch them play against us. We have different, we have a lot of things that we can use these open space for, that's going to be both beneficial to our kids and also to our businesses. We have to learn to use these open space wisely, that we're benefiting everything. And it's, sometimes it's not just about putting a big building on the open space, but leaving it to be an open space, so the kids can go out there and run and have fun. You know, it's not about putting buildings everywhere we see in open space, it's about thinking, what does the community need? I know in District 3, we have a lot of the kids that are playing in the junior all-American teams. We used to have a Pop Warner, and they're gone. So, oh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
Are we talking about open spaces like parks, or? Yeah.
Whatever, no, it's just whatever open space means to you.
Well, I'm a big fan of open space. I'm actually, one of the reasons I bought my house was I loved the fact that it had an orange grove in the backyard, and I wanted to restore it and be able to go back out there and feel like the 20th century had almost not happened. It's nice to have space between my house and the next house. It's nice in the associations to have community parks. You can pack the houses closer together, as long as you have a place where people can go and be in an open area. They're all nice. You're right, we don't need to build on every step, we need to have a place for wild animals, we need to have places that are wild, we need to have places for water to settle back into the aquifer. We need to have spaces where we just don't have, something just, like we don't have to build on every single square foot. I'd almost rather see houses on smaller lots and have some of the areas in between left, open, and wild.
Okay, thank you. Carlos?
You know, I think a lot of what's been said, it's great, and I agree specifically with Greg too, on the nature piece of open spaces. I think also for me, open spaces means also land, and land, like I said before, is very precious, right? We need to protect local resources and local natural resources. I think also that we need to take advantage also of opportunities where if we need to give rid of land or build on land, it has to create a great revenue for our city, and it has to make sense. It can't be just because, you know, there's an open space, let me plant whatever it is that I decide to put in. I know that it has to go through a process, but I think it's also a great opportunity again for our citizens in our community to come together to voice their opinion. And again, we've seen this before, not everyone's going to agree on everything, but you also can't sit behind your keyboard and complain about things if you're not getting out there to city council meetings and voicing your opinion as well too. So I commend a lot of the folks, they get out there, make their voices heard. I think there's always great communication and dialogue that we should all be able to have. And again, we don't all have to agree on everything, but we can all work together for one common goal as well.
Great, thank you. Shannon?
I would agree with a lot of what's been said. When I think of open spaces, I think how valuable, because the state of California is obviously going the direction of trying to remove most open spaces. I think a lot of people have come to Upland because of our open space, and I do believe it's conducive to a thriving city, and I think it gives an opportunity for our residents health-wise. So as an elected official, that's something that would always be on my radar, is fighting local control as much as we can possible with what the state of California is trying to mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you guys all did fantastic. I want you to know, I know that was kind of an esoteric topic, but I wanted to see where it would go, and I think you all did wonderful. So here's my final one, okay? And we will start with Greg, all right? Get ready. Okay. Water.
Water's gold in California. I mean, this is the big problem. We have been telling people that they need to conserve, we've been telling people that they can't use more water, and then the next step is, is now we've got a whole lot more houses and a demand on the water. It's going to get to the point where we're going to have to be extremely careful with all of our water use. I mean, the only reason Southern California is doing what it's doing is we're taking water from other parts of the state and other states, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to give water its due, because every time we have a drought, we're in big trouble. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Carlos?
So on the water issue, something, and I'm going to tell you straight out, I need to do a lot more research and back research, specifically more on our water issue. One thing though that I will tell you, that has affected us as a community member specifically in our city, is the fact that our water rates have gone sky-high every night. And I want to know exactly why that's happened over the last several years, and I don't think that's be let up anytime soon. So I want to make sure that I purse myself and educate myself a bit more before I actually give you more of an appropriate answer. So thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
So water obviously is very precious, like Greg said, it is gold. We are in a good position in the city of Upland as far as our water. We start that we are recognizing that our infrastructure is starting to crumble, and we are funding a 16 and a half million dollar reservoir on 17th and Benson. So it's always critical to understand that when we make decisions on the recent water rates, and we front-loaded the rate on the residents, contrary to what that would do, you know, for every decision we make, it, you know, it has an opposite and equal reaction in the result. So when, if I were an elected official, I would definitely want to see where currently the water rates are paused on the increases on the water bills, making sure that it's going to be something that we can reevaluate and not put the strain on the resident, as well as prioritize our infrastructure, which a lot of needs replacing underneath our roadways for our water delivery, that is critical. And as well, I would say, Carlos, kind of piggybacking off of that, it's a huge subject to take on, so I'll just leave it with that, and thank you.
Thank you. Tao?
Yeah. Like everyone says, water is the, you know, one of the main things we know that is very expensive in our bills and so forth like that. You know, it's something that we need to research and to study. Is there new ways of saving water? Is there new ways? Every time we see the rain, I always think about, you know, back at home in Mexico, we always had drums and stuff, we're saving waters and so forth. What is the city doing to create more opportunities for us to save rainwater? What are we doing, are we looking into different projects? Are we doing all these things? Thinking about transparency, you know, have we asked the citizens? Have we asked, like, you know, like Carlos said earlier, we have this, this, the citizens here that maybe some people are experts in this thing, where they can understand, hey, you know what, if we built this, we can save this percentage of water when it rains, we can store more of the water here, and we can, you know, channel the water this way and save more. You know, we need to come up with different ideas to help improve, because, you know, before Upland was Upland, this is a desert. You know, and we, water is very important, and so we need to do all that we can to preserve and save, and, you know, do the best we can.
Yes, all very good answers. My prediction has been that water is going to be as high-priced as gasoline at some point. But I do love flowers, so it's going to be a big trade-off. So just so that we have an even, because I like things to balance, we are going to do one more, I know I said it was, that was my last one, but Carlos will go first this time. I'm going to give a little bit more detail on this one. And so Carlos, the idea of another sales tax.
So I think that we need revenue. Sales tax is important. I know that we can do better on that. But I will tell you, right now with the current proposal of actually having a sales tax in the current economy that we're in right now, it's not fair to citizens, it's not fair to folks. And I say this because I know for a fact, I mean, I've been involved in working with DPS, I've seen folks that are out of jobs, I've worked very closely with families who have become homeless, and I've worked in the trenches with them to get their technical skills back up and get them back on their feet. So there's a lot of this that's happening, not only in other cities, but here in Upland as well. Businesses are closing. Take a look at downtown Upland, for example. There's a lot of open spaces there, and it's not by fault, I mean, there's a lot of businesses because of the restrictions, they've had to close the doors, they've had to, you know, be very creative. And I think putting a tax on not only businesses, but also our citizens who are struggling at this moment would not be the correct thing to do. However, if this comes back again for us to reconsider at a later time, it's definitely something that we need to take a look at. I also believe that it's very important that if we're going to go down this path of additional tax, that as a city, as council, as everyone working in leadership, we need to be very transparent of where this tax revenue money is going to go to. One specific question that I always ask is, is this money, this tax money going to go specifically back to the general fund, or is it going to be distributed into specific programs? And these are the detailed things that I plan on learning as I am elected city council.
Thank you. Shannon?
Going forward on the sales tax, first, we need to establish some trust and transparency with the new leadership, that's first and foremost. This is something that we need to earn as leaders in our city before placing this on the ballot, and we do have challenging times ahead of us right now. I don't want to wait for an oversight committee just with the talks of the sales tax. I don't want to say, oh, we have a sales tax, we'll put an oversight committee, let's start now. We have a finance committee currently in City Hall that any resident can attend, let's get the messaging out, and let's let our residents, a panel of five to seven residents apply for an oversight committee and start that process. And as we earn that trust, maybe we will earn that item on the ballot in our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tao?
I think one of the most important things, we need to start educating. When you start educating people, our position, where we are and what we're doing. We have the same sales tax as Rancho and Ontario, and they're twice our size, and they have way more business to bring in more money. We have to start now educating everyone till we get to two years from now, because two years from now is when we're going to put, we should be putting the tax back on to, for the people to vote on it. You have to understand, everyone hears tax, and it's just this negative thing, and it's so bad, and so awful, they have to see why and what, like, where is it going to go? Transparency is a very important thing, but we can't do that at the last minute. We can't just show up two years from now and say, hey, this is, and then we need it so badly and force it on everybody. We need to start the transparency now, explaining, what are we going to do with it? Why is it needful? Why do we, you know, who do we compare with? I mean, if we look at Montclair, Montclair has an 8% tax, you know, they have a higher tax than us. We just can't wait for the last minute. Preparation is very important, and as a good leader, we need to start preparing people, because we all know revenue is what we need, because we are in trouble right now. We know that. The COVID has affected us in a way financially that's going to hurt us. We have to prepare for these things. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg?
Well, I'm not exactly thrilled about sales tax increase. I would prefer to see more business generating more dollars, because when you have a sales tax increase, you are going to send some business away. There are definitely people that come and buy big-ticket items in an area where the sales tax is There are definitely people that come and buy big-ticket items in an area where the sales tax is lower. Basically, the, all of Orange County is 7.75, the same as us. Um, mo-- most of the cities around us are still 7.75. There's an awful lot of people that come from LA County, you know, just right over the county line, and they come here to spend money because it's a significantly lower tax rate. So we are going to lose some of those. So you can't just say we have a 1% sales tax increase, that's gonna be 1% more. We're gonna have 1% more, but we're gonna lose some of that business. Um, I, I have one business that I deal with. They've got 2.6 million square feet of warehousing in a, in a nearby city. He basically tells me that if they raise the sales tax rate in that city, he's gone. He will go to where it's still 7.75. That's a lot of people, a lot of dollars, and a lot of sales. And if that city does it, they, then he's gone. So we have to, we have to look at the total solution, not just the, the...
Right. I think that the ramifications, the financial ramifications related to COVID, um, have still yet to be fully felt from all levels of government and that I think that that will be something that all of us will be grappling with for quite some time and so moving forward. So thank you. Thank you for playing that little game, okay, with me. Um, I think you all did wonderful, all right? Um, very good thinking on your feet. So what we'd like to do now is we'll move into closing statements. Um, and so as I mentioned, we are going to work backwards, um, on the closing, um, statements. Each closing statement is two minutes. Um, and we will start with Carlos Garcia for District Three.
All right. Thank you, Shelley, again, for hosting this. Heidi, also, for keeping our time and keeping us straight on that. Um, folks, I am, my name again is Carlos Garcia. I am asking for your support this November to represent District Three, to have a voice on the city council. Again, I will remind you, I am not a politician. You know, we have two years left on the term of this seat. I wanna make sure we don't waste precious time not involving or listening to our community when it comes to significant decisions. I wanna bring change to our city, therefore, my goal is gonna be to be a voice for our community and district. With the help of all of us, I would like to make an impact in the following areas, which is basically public safety and continue to work closely with our police department and community to continue to build our neighborhood watch programs and continue to eliminate crime in our city. I would also, again, like to remind you and share with you that the Upland Police Officers and Police Management Associations have endorsed me as a city council candidate, which I'm very grateful for. I also wanna make sure that I fight for our parks, wanna, wanna make sure that I work hard for us to prevent the sale of any precious parkland. Um, as far as economic development, I also wanna look for opportunities to attract new family-oriented businesses that would contribute to our city points, uh, points of sale tax revenue. But more importantly, I wanna make sure that we are doing everything we can to help current businesses in our city with their struggle due to the COVID, COVID, um, restrictions. Uh, I have coordinated neighborhood watch meetings to keep our community safe. I'm also very excited about listening to our community and gathering their input to take our city to the next level. Communication is vital for us to stay involved in our city of gracious living. I wanna thank you for your consideration and support, and remember, it's about unity for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. So we will now hear from Greg Bradley, who's been a great sport tonight. We appreciate your participating. Um, and Greg is running for treasurer.
Well, I'd like to say, uh, you guys told me I had two minutes to speak, and that was it. So I spent all my time trying to condense five minutes down to two, and, and, and now I'm trying to come up with something to say. Um, I'm definitely not a politician. Two months ago, if somebody'd said they were gonna run for office, I would have absolutely laughed in their face. I, I got talked into being a president of a homeowners association in Upland about 25 years ago, and I thought that was the only thing I'd ever do as far as politics, which, which isn't very far. Uh, I'm not a, a public speaker or a politician. I'm the, the nerd that works in the background and figures out how everything works, figures out how to make things work better. Um, uh, I do wanna say that I, I'm in this because I love Upland. Uh, I intend to live here the rest of my life. Several of my long-term friends have moved out of state just in the last year, and they're all saying, well, when are you coming with us? And I think I'd rather fight than leave. I'm in this to make Upland a better place 10 and 20 years from now. I'm not concerned about fixing something, patching it, and leaving a bigger mess for the next round of people to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. And from a District Three candidate, Tao Ho Chi.
Thank you so much, and thank you for this forum. Um, I just wanna say, you know, I did not wanna get into politics. If you ask all those guys who coached, um, that I coached at the Junior All-American, they asked me years and year and year to join the, um, the board, and I was like, nope. I just wanna be here and coach. Um, I'm a hands-on person. I think that, that our community needs someone that's here with them, that's not distant. You know, someone that you can be available to, someone you can talk to. And people who know me, know me, I, I'm, I'm me. I'd say what I think is best. There's no strings attached with me. You're gonna get the honest truth. Um, you know, I'm gonna love you as much as I can and do all the things I can to help your, this Upland city grow. Um, District Three, we do need to work on a lot of things, uh, to help everything get better. I'm glad to see that the Seventh Street is now being done when, um, it was planned to be done in 2022. I'm glad to see that they're starting to distribute things and be more equal in taking care of the city as a whole. Um, District Three, we have different problems in other districts, and we need someone here who understands what we need. We need jobs for our, our, our community. We need to find things that are gonna bring not only revenue, but jobs. You know, we, we have a lot of renters here that are not homeowners, that are in, in, in our District Three, and we need to take care of them. We have a homeless problem. We have a homeless problem here in District Three that we need to take care of. We need to solve this problem. Because this problem is, uh, everywhere I go in District Three, they, they complain about that problem. Um, and it starts with the police force. We gotta build the police force up. We cannot do all these other things, homeless, crime, and everything, until we build that police force the way it's supposed to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last but definitely not least, we have Shannon Mouse from District One.
Well, I wanna say thank you as well again to the facilitators, and thank you to Carlos for, uh, making sure that this came to fruition for us. And I do wanna apologize for the camera. What did happen is I'm at my office for stronger Wi-Fi in the entire building when it lost electricity. Um, luckily, quickly, when it came back up, I, I didn't lose a beat, but I did lose the camera without rebooting, so I didn't wanna take that chance so I could stay in the forum. So thank you for that and, and being gracious and, and letting me interject. Um, I want to take my volunteerism and my business expertise, and I want to take this into a leadership capacity. And I do support public safety, and I'm proud to, um, announce as well that I've been endorsed by the Upland Police Officer Association. I do want to work on capitalizing on revenue in our city, any streams that we can get, but, um, also focusing on economic development, which is our number-one way of, uh, generating revenue into our city. I do wanna refocus our priorities on our customer service to our residents. Um, even though we might be absent revenue, we can work smart, not hard, and more efficiently in being able to, to br-- to provide those services to our residents. And I do wanna say that I, I hope I do earn your vote, and I look forward to meeting more residents. Um, the journey has just been wonderful, um, being involved and meeting so many great people and, um, being able to, um, bring everyone that we can together and, uh, increase our civic engagement and increase our outreach, um, as hopefully your future leader on council. And I do wanna say that in the comments after this, I'll leave my email for everyone in my leading, media links, and I hope, uh, to hear from more. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. We wish all of you the best of luck, um, in this election. And I want to encourage everyone out there to reach out to the individuals that are running from office. They are very approachable, very willing to answer questions, and make sure that you, um, hold them and to get their thoughts prior to casting your vote. So thank you, and good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.